Norberto Maral. Because of their time sharing it with us and having this special time. We are proud to have you among us. We thank you very much. I'm sure we're going to have a great time. And I think it's a privilege and an honor to be here. We are several people attending, but I think the best is to introduce ourselves and start a meeting as soon as we finish. If you agree. So please, according to my screen, well, I think the first thing should be our president, Radhi, to introduce herself. If there were any need of it. So please go ahead.
Sure. My name's Radhi Spear. I've been a Toastmaster now for 25 years. This June 30th will be 25 years at my home club, AT&amp;T Middletown Toastmasters. And I am the current international president and thank you for your support and it's been a wonderful journey.
Thank you. And next one, Norberto, please.
Yes, I'm Norberto Maral. I'm the district director-elect, which means that I will only start my term in one week's time. One week from today, in fact.
Wow.
I've been a Toastmaster since October 2011. And I usually say that I'm a founding member of my club, but all I did was just a signature. They asked me, Norberto, are you staying? And they looked very eager. And I said, yeah, of course I am. Well, if you don't mind, can you please sign here on the dotted line? Because you are the last signature that we need in order to charter our club. Yeah, sure, of course, whatever you need, just sign it. And here I am still today.
Where do you come from, Norberto? Thank you.
From Portugal. In particular, I live in Aveiro, which is a small town just south of Porto.
Okay. Great. Just following my screen, I have Angel Valdemodos.
Hello, everybody. This is Angel. So yes, originally I'm a Drenio and Spanish. But as I was saying before, I live now in Dubai, which is a very hot place now for every reason. Not only for the weather, but also for other reasons, not what we did. But I'm here, so now everything is peaceful, even though yesterday they closed the airspace. But now it seems that everything is okay. So it feels like, fine, I'll find him. So good evening to everyone. Good evening. Well, yes, good evening. It is, what time is it here? It's like, yeah, it is nine thirty only. It's not that late.
Nine thirty. Okay, thank you, Angel. Next one, Pedro. Pedro Casillas, please.
Hello, I'm Pedro. I've been a member of Toastmasters since 2002, 23 years. And I've done quite a few things since I've been around. I'm a member of Sardinero. I live in London, so zooming from lovely London where it's hot and sticky and horrible. But hey, that's London for you.
Okay, thank you, Angel. Going to Angela Fortes, please.
Okay, hello again. I live in Santander. I belong to Santander 10 years ago because we're having our 10th anniversary. I'm happy to be here with these people that I know most of them. So thank you for coming. And back to you, Juan.
Thank you, Angela. Our distinguished Toastmasters as well, Mike Monroe, please.
Hello, I'll be your Toastmaster this evening. So I'm from Texas, live in Spain. I'm a member of Toastmasters Sardinero, and it's a pleasure to meet all of you. Thank you very much, Juan.
Thank you, Mike. Next one, according to my screen, this is chaotic back there. Angela Chapa, please.
Hello, I'm Angel. I have been in Toastmasters since the end of, from December 2016, so almost eight, nine years. I belong to a corporate club in Gran micro, which belongs to Santander. And I'm very pleased to be here with our current president and with the rest of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. I see. Next one, Scarlett Vaca, please.
Hi, I'm Scarlett. I'm preaching from Barcelona. I'm a dual member in a 100% online club, a World Media Toastmasters, and a 100% in-person club, Barcelona Pride Toastmasters. So this is it, eager to learn, eager to reconnect with you. So back to you, Juan.
Okay, thank you, Scarlett. And next one, Donna Lewis, please.
Good morning. I'm Donna Lewis. I am in Rancho Cudovac, California, right outside of Sacramento. I joined Toastmasters, it'll be 12 years on July 1st. I am the incoming PQD for our district. And I'm excited to be here because my maiden name is Valdez and my family's from Spain.
Oh, great. Thanks to Donna. And next one, Paula Felix, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm from Portugal, Lydia Toastmasters Club. And I'm here to learn and to connect with you. It's a pleasure and an honor to be with you and to share this meeting. Back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Next one, Valeria. Our friend Valeria from Vigo, please.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm Valeria. I'm from Vigo in the north of Spain, in Galicia. And I have been in Toastmasters since, I don't know, two years ago, more or less. And I'm really happy to be here. Thanks, Angela, for inviting me. Back to you.
Thank you, Valeria. And thank you. And finally, Javier Matias, please. Can you introduce yourself?
Hello, I am Javier Matias. I live in Santander and I was born in Santander too. I belong to Toastmasters since February last year. Many thanks.
Thank you, Javier. Okay, welcome again, everyone. And according to our program to be faithful to our agenda, I give the stage to our Toastmaster of the day, Mike Monroe.
Thank you, Juan, and welcome to Toastmasters Sardinero for our special meeting today, Tuesday, 24 June. Summer has arrived, but if you live in Spain, summer is special. And you know why? Because we live here in the most beautiful area in northern Spain. It's called Cantabria. If you have not been to Cantabria, let me give you a little secret here. It's probably the most beautiful area in all of Spain, okay? Not the Mediterranean. Yes, Barcelona is beautiful, I understand. And Galicia is beautiful, and Vigo, I understand. But when you come to northern Spain, you'll never want to leave. I've been living here for almost 15 years. And I'm still here. And we are now among Toastmasters from Dubai, London, New Jersey, everywhere. So and London, of course, beautiful, beautiful rainy London, but hey, we understand. I'm your Toastmaster, special meeting today. The month of June is very special for us here in Toastmasters Sardinero. We were founded by our co-founder Angela, who was our co-founder and our first president. That was 10 years ago. And that's why we're here. Thank you, Angela. I am waving, I am clapping. Leadership in actions. Speakers lead, leaders speak. That's Angela. And tonight we have a special meeting. We have two special guests. And they will share with us Toastmasters, but we also have a timer. And Valeria, you have two speakers today.
Yeah.
Our two special speakers. Our first speaker will speak 10 to 15 minutes. And our second speaker, Norberto, will speak, my gosh, 15 to 20 minutes. Am I correct? Just double checking. Perfect. And they will give, and then after our two speakers, we will have a question and answer session moderated by Pedro in London. And then if there's time enough, we'll have table topics at the end of our presentation, if there's time. So we have a very special meeting today. Let's move forward for our first speaker. The international president for 2024 to 2025. Her term will soon come to an end, and I'm sure she's looking forward to that. I don't know, I don't know. She's a mother of two daughters, a wife, and an electrical engineer. And she has time for Toastmasters, incredible. And she lives in Prescott, New Jersey. I can't say it, but I tried. This New Jersey, she lives in New Jersey, in the eastern part of the United States. And the title of her speech is Why Toastmasters? So please put your hands together, hands together and warm welcome to our international president, Radhi Spear. Radhi, you have the stage.
You know, 100 years ago, one man had a simple vision to provide a supportive environment where people could improve their speaking skills. It is truly amazing that this simple vision of one man has evolved into an international organization that's in 150 countries with over 14,000 members and over 272,000, sorry, 14,000 clubs and over 272,000 members. And when I look back on my journey in Toastmasters, I am so proud to be a Toastmaster. So the question I get asked is, you know, Dr. Smedley knew that communication skills are extremely important. But the question I get asked is, why Toastmasters? Yeah, communication skills are important. I can read books, I can watch videos, I can watch YouTube. I could go to the local library, I can do an online class, Coursera, LinkedIn, go to the public university close by and learn public speaking. Why Toastmasters? Well, Toastmasters offers us so much more than just public speaking. If I think of all the features that we have in Toastmasters, first of all, it's a very safe place. You don't have to worry if you stumble, if you fumble, if you forget what you're going to say, you get nervous. It's okay. It's safe. It's a judgment-free zone. You can come here and you can practice. And here we learn, it's all experiential learning. It's learning by doing. You give a speech, you get feedback, you work on the feedback, and you keep improving. You become a better speaker, a better leader, a better you. And what you will notice is the side effect of coming to Toastmasters is that it just builds your confidence. I have seen that. It's tangible. A person joins, within six months, you see the difference in the person. Their confidence increases so much, their mindset changes. They're not worried about being a perfectionist before they can give a speech. They know that they can improve with just persistence. They keep trying, they keep learning, they keep doing it over and over again. And you learn that it's a community, a community of like-minded people who are there to support you, who are there to help you. And everyone's going at their own pace, but they're all there trying to help you. And you learn so many soft skills, not just public speaking, that you can use in your everyday life. So when we say communication skills, it's not just speaking in front of a group of people. It's about having those difficult conversations, about having an interview, how you speak, how you answer, how to be clear, how to connect, to speak with confidence. Every time you take a role in the club as an officer, you are learning to inspire, to lead. If you are running, say, the speech contest, you're really doing project management. Who is going to book the room? Or who is going to make sure the Zoom is running? Who is going to get the refreshments? Who is going to advertise? It's teamwork, it's collaboration, it's networking. There are so many skills that we learn in Toastmasters that we can use in everyday life. It is not just public speaking. It's so much more than that. And one of my favorite quotes by our founder, Dr. Smedley, is, ours is the only organization I know dedicated to the individual. We work together to bring out the best in each of us, and then we apply these skills to help others. So how great is that, that this organization is only interested in helping you improve your skills? They are not interested in making money. You can learn these skills and make money, but the organization's purpose is just to support you and to help you. And every role you take, you keep reinforcing all those skills that you learned. And we have so many roles, starting at the club level, where you take meeting roles, club officer roles. Then you move on to the district level, where you could be, you know, a conference chair or area director, division director, district leadership. And then at the international level. So we keep reinforcing these skills every step of the way, over and over again. As I mentioned, I was in AT&amp;T in my home club. I'm a charter member now for 25 years. AT&amp;T is the phone company in the US. And every year they have something called a hackathon. So because it's a technical place, once a year, they ask the employees to form little groups, work for 24 hours, think of an idea that will help the company, work on it, come up with some rudimentary plans and present it as something that the company could do to help the company make money. And invariably, whenever a Toastmaster took part in this contest, they would at least play for a second or third. And I used to think initially, wow, all the best brilliant people in AT&amp;T have joined my Toastmasters club that they keep winning every year. And then it dawned on me that perhaps their ideas aren't really the best, but they know how to present. They know how to showcase their ideas, and so they keep winning. And it occurred to me out there, there must be so many scientists, doctors, engineers, lawyers, historians, people in all walks of life who have all these brilliant ideas that society can use. But unfortunately, they have not tried to improve their communication skills to share with the rest of us. If only they would join Toastmasters, it would really help all of us. Now, when I told Angela I was going to speak at your club, she also said, tell us how we can make our club stronger. Like, I'd like to know more about that as well. So I actually studied your club. And when I look at the stats of your club, your club was doing pretty well until COVID hit. And then recently, the membership has gone down a bit, even though you're getting the educational goals and other goals. So I just want to say, you know, if you talk about all the people who leave Toastmasters, and by the way, we have a data hub on our Toastmasters website. If you look at it and you look at the alumni survey, 95% of them really approve of Toastmasters. They say that they will come back. Eight out of 10 would recommend Toastmasters. So when people leave us, they're not leaving because they don't like the program. There are reasons, you know, you change jobs, your family moves. You know, there are other reasons why they are not there in Toastmasters. So what can we do to keep our members, to make our clubs stronger? That's the question. So another favorite quote of mine, what Dr. Smedley said, was that we learn best during moments of enjoyment. So if your club is fun, then you're likely to keep all your members and even grow the membership. So I would say, for a successful club, you need members and you need well-run meetings. Now, members would be existing members and new members, and well-run meetings provide value to members, right? Everybody is coming to this meeting because they're going to get something out of it. I like to say, all of us listen to WII FM radio. What's in it for me? There has to be something, that's why you come. So if we provide value, they will stay. So the first question is, how do we increase our membership? Now, some of you might say, oh, Radhi, you're the president. Easy for you to say, oh, just grow the membership. What's the big deal, right? So let me show you. This is my home club. I need to practice what I preach. This is AT&amp;T Middletown Toastmasters, my home club. And as you can see, the last 16 years, we've been presidents distinguished over 20 members. But you see where the arrow is? I just want to share with you. That was in 2005, 2006. I just got elected club growth director. I'm using current terminology. Those days it was called Lieutenant Governor of Marketing. So I have to tell you, as soon as I was elected, my home district was New York City and the surroundings. And I thought, oh my God, I'm elected as the go-to person for marketing. And my own home club has 12 members and could have a coach. I just felt like an imposter, like, oh my God, I got to fix this before anybody finds out. If you think the dashboard is hard to read today, those days was even harder. So I guess people couldn't, didn't really know how to dig into the information to know about my home club. So I thought, I got to fix this quickly. So, you know, I work at AT&amp;T, 5,000 employees are there. I just get to need more members to join. I told my Toastmasters friends, let's have a table outside the cafeteria. We'll get some people to join, then I'll bring up the membership, and then I can focus on my job as CGD. When you have 12 members, at least in America, rule of thumb is only 50% show up at a meeting. So there were only about five or six I could call. And in the five or six, when I said, come sit in front of the cafeteria, they're like, what? Waste my lunchtime? Forget it. I'm not coming. So they didn't want to come. So I had to beg my friends, other friends, can you pretend, pretend to be a Toastmaster? Come sit with me. I'll have the banner, I'll have brochures, I'll sit here for two hours, I'm going to get this membership up. After two hours, I got zero. Nobody wanted to join my club. I'm like, oh my God, what am I going to do? I have this huge, and we were one of the largest districts in the world. We had over 240 clubs at the time. So I have this huge district to take care of. I have, membership in my club is so low, I have no time. And I'm not very creative, so I put this very rudimentary thing. You know, we had a PowerPoint that they displayed across the building complex, the campus. So I had this thing about, hey, you want to increase your self-confidence? Come join the club. And then I had the information about when the club meets. And then we had an electronic newsletter. So I put, you know, are you worried about your presentation? Come join us, there's a club. And if you notice, if you look at the graph that I showed you, the following year, by the end of the year, we were up to 28 members. So you know what this boils down to? Yeah, have you, do you know what this is? At least in the US, we get a lot of this. We call it junk mail. I don't know if you get junk mail in Spain and other parts. And why do they send you all this junk mail? You know, you just take the whole thing and you go and throw it. But as you go to throw it, you might look at one thing or something else and think, oh, there's a sale here. Oh, let me, you know, I didn't know something, right? They just want you to look at it. So the bottom line is this, it's just advertising, 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 to get people to come. But it's not enough just to get them to come. You better have a good meeting. Because if people show up to your club and you have a poorly run meeting, you're in trouble. You need to have pride. You need to have a well-run meeting. So what I would say is, have an agenda. Even if there are three people, you have to run a meeting. That's what we did. And say you have speakers and you have the evaluator and table topics. And the day of the meeting, the speakers will call you and say, oh, I'm so sorry, I got a deadline. Oh, my child is sick. I don't feel well. I can't come, something, right? It always happens. So we always have one of these canned speeches ready, Better Speaker Series, Successful Club Series. It's all there online. You just present it in your own words and it helps the club, like how to give an introduction, how to conquer your anxiety, evaluate to motivate. There are all these canned projects that you can give which are helpful. Another silver lining of COVID was, there are all these world championship speeches available. We just watch one of the world champion speeches and evaluate that. We just learn from observing. Table topics is easy. Have a book of quotations. Tell me a page number, read a quote, what do you think? Look at a newspaper headlines, talk about it, have change in your pocket, what happened in 1972, something. So you can run a good meeting, whether you have a prepared speaker or not, because you need to have a good meeting. You can't just advertise, guests show up and have a poorly run meeting. It's not going to work. Have pride in your club. When I said that, you know, Toastmasters is a community, last year I went to, not last year, maybe year before, they sent me to Oklahoma. So everybody at work said, who do you know in Oklahoma? I said, I don't know anybody in Oklahoma, but they're Toastmasters. I'm not worried. And when I got there, they said, oh, Radhi, be ready tomorrow at 5:30. And I thought, oh, 5:30 PM? And they said, no, no, AM, because we're taking you to this early risers Toastmasters club. I'm like, really? And believe it or not, the place was packed. But when I got there, see, this was the banners, everything was set up, there were over 30 people there. What this shows to me is pride, pride in Toastmasters. Look at all the ribbons, right? If someone comes to this club, they're going to say, hey, I want to join this club. These people have a really good club. They have all these ribbons, must be good. But I know one of you said that you are in an online club. Well, have these, you know, on the screen and your background. Like, whatever it is that makes your club stand out. Maybe you have a district champion. Maybe you're the only club that meets on Tuesdays at 7:30. Maybe that's the only time good for people. Whatever that makes your club unique, that you're proud of, you have to advertise that fact, that this is what it is. So that people, you show pride, that we've been distinguished, you know, four years in a row. Whatever makes you the best club there is, have pride. And, you know, when guests come, close the sale. I have been to so many open houses where they conduct the whole open house, people have a great time, and then they're leaving. Nobody even gave them an application form. Nobody even said, hey, do you want to join, right? Greet members, sit with them, involve them, ask them if they want to take part in table topics. Maybe they're too shy, maybe not, right? Give them an opportunity, ask them to join, ask them to come again. And you know, a guest never forgets how they're treated. So it's important that we ask them to join. That is all the key. So there was nothing big secret. And in my home club, we had also got two posters outside the cafeteria. So when I show you this, after that first year, we left those posters in place. We haven't changed anything. We sometimes change the poster to look a little different, but the club just runs smoothly. People just see this and come to our meeting, and we make sure we run a good meeting. So that, to me, is the key. And so well-run meetings provide value to our members. So you have to have a well-run meeting and you have to advertise. So Angela, that is my secret. If you are asking me, what is it that we should do? I would say that's all it is. It's just the basics. And one of my favorite authors is Mark Twain, who said, "The secret of getting ahead is getting started." So we have all started already in Toastmasters. Let's get started. Make sure we advertise, make sure we get people, make sure we have good meetings. And I think you guys will do great. With that, thank you so much for having me. Back to you.
Thank you very much, Radhi. Thank you very, very much for that information and sharing with us your journey in Toastmasters and how we can improve and continue improving. Thank you very much. After our second speaker, we're going to have some questions for you and our second speaker, and I hope you'll be available to answer those questions. Now, we move on to our next speaker, all the way from Portugal. Now, Radhi will be ending her turn as the international president next week. Whereas Norberto will be next week.
No, my term ends in August.
August, I'm sorry. August. That's correct. At the international convention. Thank you, thank you. Philadelphia. I stand corrected. That's right. You have to be there for that. Very important. Thank you, Radhi. Thank you very much. And our next speaker from Portugal, who will start his term as the new district director for 107, Portugal, Spain, Tunisia, Morocco, Algeria, and Gibraltar, the Rock. I like that, the Rock. And he's going to speak with us now. I met Norberto a couple of years ago, but I never got to work with him till last year. But now he's going to talk about our shared story. Our shared story. He'll be speaking from 15 to 20 minutes, man timer. So Norberto, you have the stage.
Thank you so much, Mike. It's a pleasure to be introduced by you. And thank you, everyone, for inviting me. And yes, I'm here to share our shared story. What is this story? Well, let's talk a little bit about our district, because it has lots of nice things that probably some people don't know about. And I can say that because I'm a bit of a dinosaur, I know some of these things. I was there when things were decided. So I wonder if you don't know about these things, maybe I'll be the right person to tell you about them. At least I hope so. As Mike just said, we are District 107. And as you can see from the flags above me, yes, these are the countries that we have clubs in, or at least two of them we don't yet. Let's start. The first two are Algeria and Andorra. Incidentally, those are the two countries that we don't have any clubs yet. But if you know anyone there, let us know, because we're interested in creating them. But we do have clubs everywhere else. We do have clubs in the other countries, which are, let me see this again, Gibraltar, the Rock. And then we have Morocco, Portugal, Spain, and Tunisia. So that's five. And then we have Morocco, Portugal, Spain and Tunisia, so that's five clubs in total. And the, sorry, not five clubs, five countries in total. And by the way, I don't know if you know about this, but we do have two clubs that are online. And they are actually located in a different country. One of them from Cabo Verde, which is the archipelago of islands just off the coast of Africa. And the other one is in Bissau, which is in Guinea-Bissau, that's actually on the west coast of Africa. These two countries, they joined our district a few years ago, when they joined. But they are online, so they can be with whatever district they want. But I think that if they become. An actual club, as in not just online, but in presence, then they will have to leave, because I think they will have to be in a different region. In fact, not even in Europe, which is a bit of a shame, so we're kind of thinking, let's keep them, but I digress. Let's go back. Ten years ago, May twenty fifteen, that was the first time that I saw that I was present in a spring conference. It happened in Porto, and to be honest, I had no idea what to expect, nothing. I didn't even pay for the gala dinner, big mistake. It's that kind of money, just a little bit of money, that it would go a long way, and then the next day I would know all the stories, and I probably don't know about them. But I do remember a few things. I remember meeting lots of people from other countries, because back then the district was bigger, it was the whole of Western Europe. Not just Portugal and Spain, but we have France, we had Belgium, Luxembourg, the Netherlands, Switzerland, Italy. We even have Athens, or sorry, not Athens, but Greece, which is not exactly the Western Europe, but it is in Southern Europe. But it's still part of that district. And back then, I was amazed that there were so many people there. For example, the current international director of our region, Francesco Fideli. He was a candidate for division director on that spring conference. I remember him distinctly, I don't know if it's that legal or not, but he was distributing candy on the way in, in the candidate corner. He was telling everybody, vote for me, vote for me, wow, you look nice, I can vote for you. And it was funny, because he was running from the floor, and when he was voted upon, he got lots of more votes than the other person. Today, he's the international director, just a little things, I think it was the candy. And there was one big thing that happened there. The biggest thing for me, that at least marked me the most, which is what we call the District Council Meeting, TCM. That's the place where we meet every year. This year, the meeting was online, but back then, until last year, the meeting was held in presence. And always on Saturday morning of our conference. And that's the meeting where we got together all the district directors, sorry, the district director, the core team, the division directors, the area directors. As well as the club presidents and vice presidents of education. And they voted for a number of things, a number of resolutions, of motions. Yes, one of them was Francesco Fideli, so he was elected there as division director of Italy. Not only that, there was one big news that everybody was talking about. The big news was that District fifteen, fifty-nine, well, that was the name of the district back then, with all those countries, was getting so big. That it would have to split. It would have to split in three or four, if I'm not mistaken, four different districts. I will just tell you the, the most important ones, at least for this, the relevance of this meeting. One of them is fifty-nine, that is still exists, although with fewer countries, and one oh seven. Out of all those countries, we, in Portugal and in Spain, got together and created our own district. We only had about sixty-five to seventy clubs, right now we have about eighty-eight. And we should be in the few, in the next week, we have, hope to create a few more. And back then, everybody was saying, well, not everybody, half of the people were saying. Oh, I love this, this is going to be amazing, there's going to be so many more leadership opportunities. We can have, we can get to be district directors, we can be club growth directors, we don't have to now compete with people from other countries, it's going to be easier for us. Yes, that's true. And other people were saying, oh, what a shame, because now it's just us, the Portuguese and the Spanish. Until now, we used to go to all these amazing meetings in places like Nice, like Athens, I've been to Athens twice because of Toastmasters. With Luvan, for example, in Belgium, in Winterthur, which is just outside Zurich. These were amazing conferences and meetings that we had. And we really loved having them, and now people are saying, oh, no, it's just Portugal and Spain, I've been to every, everywhere, ever. Every town in these places, I already know these places, so why do we have to be split? But, you know, because of the way that we are today, you know how the voting went. We decided overwhelmingly to split the districts. And that's how it happened. On, not that day, but on, we, we actually take a, a long time for that to enact. Because we had the vote, and then Toastmasters International will still have to review that, make sure that everything is, is fine. And then on twenty eighteen, in Athens, that's when we had our last spring conference together. The district director there was Anna Ferreira, huge friend of mine, she's a lovely lady from Portugal. She was a district director, and she actually had three club growth directors, three program quality directors. Because she already had one person from each one of these future districts. Helping to, to help them, in order to, to split them, so that everybody would be ready, so we would ensure a nice and smooth transition. And that's where we stayed. In two thousand eight, nineteen, in eighteen, we became District one oh seven. I mean, we could have been District sixty, but there was, that number was already taken, so we had to take and, take the next one in line, which was one oh seven. There's also District one oh nine, which is the one that today includes Italy and Greece, but also other countries like Albania. Some countries there, from like Malta and Cyprus. And these districts that we split upon, we still exist, with a few more countries, we still exist. And I think here, that was the first stroke of, I won't say luck, but stroke of genius, that I think that the meeting. The, sorry, the, I'm missing, mistaking some, some words there. The, the previous core team decided to call it not District one oh seven, but District Iberia. Because that's the name of this peninsula where Portugal and Spain exist. And that, for me, that I loved it, we started a website called ToastmastersIberia.com. The, the, the Gmail account was Toastmasters.Iberia@gmail.com and so on. It was Toastmasters Iberia everywhere, and there we stayed for a few years. Until, well, first of all, the pandemic struck. Two thousand and twenty, we all had to be going back at home, and we couldn't get together in person, so we started meeting online. And because of this, we had a few clubs from Morocco saying. Well, if we can't really be together, if we have to be online, we should just get together with the, with the district that is close to us. And they knocked on our door, I'll still remember, it was Samir Chakri and Adiba Metour. Samir is still a member, but he's currently li- living in Ottawa in Canada, he's emigrated about a year ago. And Adiba, I'm afraid to say that she left the, the organization, although she was in the spring conference in Rabat. And they said, Norberto and Sarah and other people who were in the core team back then. We'd love to be with you guys, we'd love to, to be in your district. So we got together again on the DCM, District Council Meeting, voted again. And we voted overwhelmingly to accept Morocco to become part of our district. And there and then, on the same hour, we said, we're not going to be called Toastmasters Iberia anymore. From now on, we're going to be called Toastmasters District one oh seven, because it's not easy to say. Port, Iberia plus northern Morocco, like Maghreb or something, it's not complete, so we decided to go back to the number. And that's our identity right now. We have a few more countries since then, I'm not exactly sure about the exact dates or even the years when they joined. But I know that since then, we now have two clubs in Tunisia, we have one club in Gibraltar, and as I said a while ago. We have two, two countries that are Andorra and Algeria, that are geographically contiguous to the rest of the countries in our district. And we thought to ask Toastmasters International, if we have, have clubs in those countries, can they join us, can they be part of this, can we already kind of reserve this. Geographical area, these countries for us, and they said, yeah. And said, hell yes, that's amazing, that's, we really love that, so we're growing. We're growing in number of clubs, we're growing in diversity, we're growing in the places now that we can get to visit again. A month ago, five weeks ago, we were in Rabat for the spring conference, and that would never happen if Morocco was not part of the District one oh seven. Probably, we wouldn't know, Radi, not from that perspective anyway, right, right, Radi? And our brothers from Morocco are amazing, they do amazing job doing, organizing that, that conference. And so will the people of Tunisia, when they have the opportunity, right now they only have two clubs, but soon they will have more clubs, and I'm sure. I've already heard a few zonzons here, zonzones, some, some words here, some words there, that they are interested in organizing a fall summit. Maybe twenty twenty-six or maybe twenty twenty-seven, who knows? And the spring conference, maybe twenty twenty-seven, that's the earliest. Wouldn't that be amazing, to go to these countries and be welcomed by locals and to know all the stories about them? I'll remember, for example, that a year and a half ago, I was in Rabat for the first time. And Otman, who was a legendary member of Toastmasters in Casablanca, and with whom. Radi had the pleasure of staying, because he was showing Radi around, and, and he was, he's such a gentle, congenial guy. He was telling us a few words, teaching us, I think it was ten or eleven words, just that, in Dariza. Dariza is the local Arabic dialect in Morocco. And it was such fun, because he was shouting these words for us to remember. I will, I will never forget the words, fico no do, that's fico no do, fico with a K, no do, exactly how you write it, it means wake up. Maybe useful sometimes, if you make a kind of a boring speech, you know how to say it, fico no do, and then you wake everybody up, at least in Morocco, otherwise people won't understand you. And we love this status right now. Now, how is it going to be in the future? Well, we don't really know how to predict everything, but I hope, first of all, first objective. And now I'm already talking as a district director, as if, as if I'm already on July the first. I would love our district to grow to a hundred clubs. This is kind of a cutoff, a minimum, that the district needs to have, a minimum number of clubs. For Toastmasters to consider, to continue consider us, consider us as a district, so we need to get there soon. We had that objective this year, which, which we weren't able to, to do, to accomplish, because we actually missed a few clubs that they actually closed. And that's such a sorry thing to happen. We had also other clubs that are coming up, that we are creating, but we just can't keep up, I think. But we are creating such a, a nice country with lots of seeds, that I'm sure some of them will sprout. And by this time next year, maybe you'll invite me again, on the twenty-third of June next year, which is gonna be on a, on a Tuesday, I know. Maybe I could come back and say, yes, we reached the hundred clubs, I'll be the happiest district director ever, I can assure you. At least from my perspective, which is myself. Since we started in two thousand eighteen, we've had amazing district directors, we've had Nelson Emilio from Portugal. Then Nacho Arenas from Madrid in Spain. We had Cristina Huesas from Vitoria, in Vitoria-Gastais in the Basque Country. We've had Sarah Magalhães from Lisbon. We've had Pablo Garcia, again, from Madrid. Pablo, by the way, this year, is a region advisor, in the US, Region Two Advisor, right, Radi? Amazing. And, and then we also have since Pablo, Vera Cunha, she was the predecessor of the current, still to finish her term. Claudia Villarreal, from Malaga, Vera, by the way, I missed that, she's from Coimbra in Portugal. And now it's me back in Portugal. And I hope to say that I'm going to start a term on the shoulders, shoulders of giants. Not just these district directors that have made an amazing impact in the district. And also the core teams, and the division directors, and the area directors, and of course, everybody who sits in the board of the directors of Toastmasters. These are amazing people that give a lot to us. I remember, Radi, I don't know if Deepak has made this joke with you, but was, when Deepak Menon, former international president, was here in Porto. Quite, quite close by to where I live, people asked him, so how much do you earn, because you're an international director, you earn a lot of money? And he said, yes, I receive a six, a six-figure salary of zeros. And people say, still say this in a very affectionate, affectionate way, because he is such a lovely person. And this is exactly what we do, we do this for free, because we know of the service and the impact that this is creating. Not just in Toastmasters International, because it's true, but mostly in our communities. When we give a little bit of our time, as we are club presidents, or VPs, VPMs, VPPRs and so on. Where, in fact, any member of the club leadership committee. When we then go to area director, division director, a member of the core team, a program quality director, and so on. We are giving a little bit of our life, a little bit of our time, to what we think is a great cause. Not because we think just that it is a great cause, but we think that it will have a great impact. I'll have to close this with something that's, a message that's I heard recently, that I saw recently, that really moved me, and that message was said by somebody who is here, Scarlett. Scarlett was, is in our core team since a week and a half ago, she was with, with us in Malaga for the transition meeting. And she was surprised, and she loved the meeting, so much so. That on Saturday, which was at the end of the day, of the first day that we got together, she recorded like this two or three minute video. Which she then subtitled, and then she put it on LinkedIn. And I'm sure that's creating ripples, it's creating some changes out there. At the very least, she's creating this for herself. I know of other people here, like Paula Felix, who are now VPM of her club, and they're making some impact in their club as well, or they will be on first of July. And anybody here can do the same, whether we are in a club, in the area, division, or the core team. Or even higher up at the region, or the board of our directors, this is why we're here. I hope to say that one day, some more people from our district will get also very far, far into the, this beautiful organization. And that we'll be here to then update this presentation, which is again, remember, called our shared story. Thank you.
Thank you, Norberto, thank you very much for your inspiring speech, your talk and sharing with us. Now to our, our guest members here today. We are now going to have a question and answer session, which will be run and moderated by our distinguished Toastmaster, twice. Twice, distinguished Toastmaster, all the way from London, beautiful London, England, where the sun shines every day. Pedro, you've got the stage.
Thank you very much, Mr. Toastmaster. I don't know why you say beautiful London, I can't remember having seen you in the last five years anywhere close to London, so what are you talking about? Now, everyone, we've had two very inspiring speeches from our international president, Radi, Radi Spear. And our incoming district director for District one oh seven. But, there's more to them than they have let out. And I know that there will be members here, listening to both of them, who will say, do you know what? If Radi Spear can become international president, why can't I? If Norberto can step up, and if he can become the district director for this growing family that he's, he's describing, like Scarlett joining the family too. And Paula, why not me? So I put together a few questions that will find out a little bit more about our guests tonight, and I put them in the chat if you'd like to take a look. I've put them under their journey, their leadership journey, the challenges, COVID, membership decline and all that type of stuff. Membership growth, growth achievements, looking ahead, and some fun reflective things about them. So, no, Radi, and no, Norberto, I am not putting you on the, the spot with a machine gun and saying, you will answer. They are easy, but I would like to hear a bit more about you, to find out about your journey and. Your thoughts about this great organization that we belong to for many, many years. Timekeeper, we're, we're gonna run this like Tabletop, Table Topics, so each question, each, there's gonna be. Uh, each, each of our speakers will have six questions each, so it's got about twenty-four minutes maximum. So if we could make it two minutes per question, per, for each of them, and I'm gonna go in order, so I'll, I'll start with Radi with a question. Then Norberto, and then I'll interact, inter- interchange as I go along, okay? So watch out, because, uh, Valeria, have you got, um, a gong or something? Because I know that particularly Norberto likes to talk, and we need to just, like, not, stop, stop. Right, first question, this is all about, um, journey to leadership, Radi. Couldn't you tell us, what key moments or mentors shaped your leadership journey within Toastmasters? So what key moments or mentors shaped your leadership journey within Toastmasters?
Yeah, I, I like to tell the story of. One of the earliest lessons I learned as a leader was when I was elected Club Growth Director, using current terminology. We used to have these DEC meetings, and my district director would go around telling all the members, we are the best, we are number one, we are District forty-six. We do everything for our members, I would just repeat whatever she said, yes, we are the greatest, we're the best. And then, a few months later, we had a DEC meeting, and an area director asked me, are we number one, are we the best? I don't know, I, I didn't know how to read the dashboard, I don't know, I was just saying that. And those days, we had a district statistician, who actually kept track of numbers, so I asked him, where do we stand, what are we? And those days, there were about eighty-something districts in the world, and he looks and he's like. And those days, there were about 80-something districts in the world, and he looks and he's like, we're all the way, you know, down there somewhere. And I thought, oh my God. So then, I actually, I had 51 area directors at the time. I wrote to each one, and I said, this is how we are measured, this is what counts, this is, you know, how we should help our membership, we want them to be distinguished, we want the educational goals and so on. We worked together, and we were distinguished. But the lesson I learned was that leaders' words matter, people are listening, people are watching. Be careful what you say, don't just say anything that enters your head, because people believe you and are like, oh, you're the leader, you're saying these things. So that made me realize that, wow, you know, it gives you a lot of power, but you've got to use it carefully. And it also made me feel really good, and is there a timer I should watch? One of the quotes that I like to say, which I read, was, before you're a leader, success is all about growing yourself. When you're a leader, success is all about growing others. And now every time I get a member to join, I charter a club, I feel we're giving them a gift, because I truly believe in the program, and it really helps them. And that's why I'm here. As Norberto said, we don't get paid, but I believe in the cause, and I want more people to benefit from it.
Thank you very much, Rady, totally agree with you. And I would hope that some of our senior politicians in the world would take note of what you've just been saying.
Yes.
Norberto, tell us, what is motivating you to want to take on the role of district director? Was there some defining moment which said, yes, I'm ready for this?
Not quite, but I can tell you another defining moment. A few years ago, I was in Barcelona Spring Conference in 2019, and I was not doing much at Toastmasters except for my club life, and of course, going to the Spring Conference, which why, by the way, since 2015, I never missed. And I was approached by Nacho. Nacho was the incoming district director, and he was telling me, Norberto, I need a parliamentarian. I thought, that's boring, Nacho, can't you have anything more interesting than that? Come on, parliamentarian of all things? And said, yeah, well, that's what I have, but it's not just about running that, having that role. It's about creating, having a commitment to the district, and sharing your opinion, and sharing your experience. And I said, so you're going to be listening to my opinion, you have so much more experience than I have? Sure, yeah, you're going to be in the team. That sounds interesting. And then I became a parliamentarian, and I loved it. And then the next year, people invited me, then Cristina Huesas invited me to become the admin manager. Okay, boring as well, but I know now that I can see that it's not just something that I can say. It's going to be boring all year, I'm sure I'm going to learn from it, which as I did with the parliamentarian, and so on. So the first, in the beginning at least, I got into because I really wanted to do something for the team, and also to learn a bit for myself. I learned a lot in every single role, but soon enough, and especially since I became a public relations manager two years ago, or three years ago, I can't be completely sure right now, I was really thinking, I can do this. I can be the district director as well. So I've kind of put myself in the path, and taken up those opportunities to actually enroll, to be a candidate, to apply for those jobs, and then to be voted upon. And it was not always smoothly. For example, I lost a CGD application to Pablo, which these days, you know, it's Pablo, it's fine. And it was a great moment, because for me, I still had an opportunity to do something else, amazing. By the way, I did that speech exactly where I'm standing right now. Oh, so sorry, you can't see what I am, but you know, it is the same place. But yeah, just to finish, and I know that I'm on red, and now Pedro, you say that, you know, I like to talk a lot, don't we all? I'll just close by saying this, I hope that this doesn't finish here by district director, I hope I can go a longer way than this.
Keep talking where you are, keep listening, keep learning. Who knows where we'll see you in the next few years? Thank you very much. Now, Rady, talking about challenges, Toastmasters, like many of our organizations, face significant challenges, particularly during Covid. And what was the most difficult decision that you can remember, that you made as a leader during that time? If you can remember, so back to Covid, what was the most difficult decision that you made as a leader during that time?
Well, when Covid was happening, I wasn't on the board, by the way, I was running for second vice president. But I do recall that when Covid hit, a lot of the CGDs didn't know what to do, because those days, they only recognized in-person clubs. And suddenly, all the club chartering came to a standstill, they weren't really motivated to create online clubs. And I remember, as a candidate, I was having interviews with district leaders, and they would tell me, should we charter an online club, what's the point, we're not getting any credit, should we do it, shouldn't we do it? And I remember calling Deepak Menon and others, I'm like, hurry up, guys, give credit for online clubs, let's move, let's do it. And I think the board was still deciding what to do, and finally, in August, they said they would accept online clubs as part of the district. So I felt they could have moved faster, though for Toastmasters, it was pretty fast what they did, it's all relative. And practically, the whole world went online overnight. That was quite difficult, because we would always say we are about public speaking. I want to say back to my story where I had the table in front of the cafeteria, being in a phone company, and I'm trying to recruit members, the best I got at that time, this is 2006, 2007, one manager stopped by and said, oh, is there a number I can call in? And I said, this is public speaking, this is not speaking on the phone, you know? So I didn't get anybody, but now we meet online, so maybe there was a possibility, but those days, we never even considered meeting on Zoom or anything. But there is a silver lining to Covid. We are now learning to speak online, train online, webinars online, hybrid meetings, in-person meetings. So the whole world is open to us. Anybody can be a Toastmaster, whether they have a disability, whether they have transportation or not, whether they are a night shift worker or something, you can always find a club. So to me, there were some benefits to it, but yes, Covid hit us very hard, we're still recovering from it.
Yeah, absolutely, totally agree. Norberto, following on from that, about hybrid meetings within District 107, I've noticed a lot of the clubs have gone back to in-person, but what do you see as the hybrid plane, hybrid meetings planes in the future of particularly District 107? Are they something that you believe will help to bring members in, or what?
In my opinion, I find it difficult to be in a hybrid meeting, especially if I am in person. It's really hard to keep eye contact with the audience that is in person, and also with the camera, that little gold thing there, made of plastic, which is on the top of a computer, and the sound is never good for people who are at home, and in fact, it's not very good also for people who are in the club. And that's really hard, I think. When I, for a while, when I was a PRM, I was also having to kind of save the club with a nabela, our current, well, our then-president as well. We had to kind of step up and do something for the club, which we felt that the club was really dwindling in number of people, and also the level of enthusiasm. And so what we did, as soon as we could, was to stop hybrid meetings. Well, in fact, that took a while. In fact, the first thing we did was, let's go back in person, let's go to hybrid first. And it took us a year, but we did it. In 20, I think it was from 2021 to 2023, we decided to stop having meetings that are purely online, and then stop having meetings that were hybrid, and then move on quickly to presence meetings. And I think we owed to that, and the number of other factors, but we owed to that. The fact that we now have the strongest club ever, not compared to others, I mean, our club is now the strongest that ever happened, even before Covid. And the people who are there are amazing, we love each other, we have lots of fun. The meetings are so good in terms of quality and in terms of having fun, that we really think that it's hard to do the same thing in hybrid, I think.
Yeah, yes, technologically, yes, it's difficult, but personally, hey, online works for London and Dubai. Staying with you, Norberto, talking about growth and membership achievements. Your time, you've mentioned that you've seen members grow in confidence and leadership communications. Does any one particular member stand out for you as someone that really inspired you to keep going?
Oh, lots, where should I start, it's really hard.
Choose one, the first person comes to your mind, in your mind.
Her name is Sandra, Sandra Vernabe, she's from my club, from Cluta in Aveiro. And she was actually one of the people who were the finalists at the district. So she was in Rabat, and she only knew about one week before that she was going to be able to come, because somebody else won the contest, and that person could go to Rabat, and she said, I'll go, sure, let's go. And she did. Sandra, I met her about two and a half years ago, it was in February 2023. And the first day, the first time that I met her, she went to a TLI. She was in the back of a car with me, when we were, other people were taking the car, usually I'm the one driving, but somebody else was driving. I was talking to her. She hadn't even been to a single meeting of our club yet. That was the very first time that she went to Toastmasters, she went all the way to a TLI. She absolutely loved it. Then when we came back to the club, she had all the things that we know that we can improve. For example, not being able to keep eye contact with the public, hesitating a lot, saying lots of ah's and other verbal crutches, doing what we call the cage line movement, which is left and right, left and right in the stage, and never looking at the public. And that's how we were kind of horrified initially, to be honest. But then, one week goes by, and another one, and another one, she keeps coming to the stage to make presentations, to make the speeches, she receives feedback, she implements that feedback. And not long after, she starts winning contests, we're talking in the same year. That was amazing, and today, she's completely at ease, she's not perfect yet, who is, I'm not, who is? And she's done an amazing job by going to Rabat, she didn't end up in the podium, but we're very, very proud of her.
Excellent, very good, yeah, absolutely. Similar sort of theme, Rady. What do you think is probably one of the most underappreciated benefits of being Toastmasters, that many members don't realize until much later in their journey? An underappreciated benefit?
Yeah, so if I may quickly add to the hybrid, you know, being in a telecommunications company at AT&amp;T, we meet in the facility, we have excellent telecommunications facilities, our hybrid meeting there is really good. The whole room is set up just for that, I don't have to bring equipment. You walk into the room, the screens go on, the speakers go on. So if you have that, hybrids meeting works, but the average community club, it's very hard, I agree. What some people do is one meeting entirely online, one meeting entirely in person, and they switch. Or we have noticed, in-person is the best experience. Coming to your question, what benefit have I noticed? I've been privileged, being president, to have gone to so many corporations, to give them corporate awards. I have had the opportunity to go to so many places and speak. People don't come up to me and say, oh, Toastmasters helped me learn communication skills or leadership skills. They tell me, Toastmasters changed my life. Because we are giving them this self-confidence, these skills that they can use in any aspect of their lives. It is the foundation, it's absolutely amazing. So when people just think, oh, Toastmasters is for communication skills, that is, I would say, incorrect, it's so much more than that. And in these companies, and by the way, 60% of Fortune 500 companies have in-house Toastmasters clubs, the upper management usually tells me, I can tell who is a Toastmaster, when they speak and when they present. It is so stark, so this program truly works.
Thank you for that. Staying with you, if I may, on achievements. During your tenure as a Toastmaster, is there one achievement that stands out for you, that you're most proud of?
Oh, well, there are many, many occasions that has made me happy.
Pick one, first one that comes to your mind.
The one that comes to mind is especially like when you mentioned, hey, if Rady can be president, why not you? I cannot tell you how many women have come up to me, totally surprised, totally amazed that I am in this position. You know, in our 100 years, only nine women have made it to this position so far, and I would be the first one. In America, I'm called a minority, a person of Indian origin who's made it. So when women come up to me and they're like, wow, you made it, that means, you know, there's opportunities for us, I feel really good, because I think, and I'm generalizing, I think the average woman sells herself short, there's so many opportunities. And you know, women weren't allowed in Toastmasters till 1973. Today, they make up 55% of our membership, so that's pretty impressive.
And it's changing all the time, and you're being followed by Alletta, who has taken over from you, and Morag preceded you.
Yes.
Sorry, the women are taking over, you have taken over, which is a good thing. And there are the women here who's listening to you today, who will be inspired by listening to you, and will be following. I can see, I can see Paola is already there, and so is Scarlett, and so is Donna. Everyone's there with you. Norberto, yes, we have achievements, but we also have challenges. Can you share a moment when something didn't go according to plan, and what you learned from it?
You keep asking me these questions, and they never give me enough time, Pedro, come on.
Okay, you will, but then again...
No, it has to be shorter, I know. Well, I'm finding one right now. As the incoming district director, I need to find two more area directors, they're still missing. Two area directors from Madrid, and it's been really hard. I've been trying to get in touch with everybody that I know there, everybody that I don't know. I've been trying to get in touch, well, not trying, but getting in touch with people like Pablo, people who are previous district directors as well, who live in the area. I've been trying to, a little bit of everything, even the current, the elect division director, and it's really hard. What I've heard was this, oh, Norberto, people are not applying because they know it's too much work. What do you mean too much work? Okay, I know area director is a bit heavy, but it looks like people have been saying, oh, area director is a really hard job. Well, it's not, it's a fun job, first of all, it's a meaningful job. And of course, it's not that light, but it's not that heavy as well. Now, what I'm finding now is, and this is my challenge, is that I need to have two new area directors in the next couple of weeks. I need to find them, in order to then enroll them at the right time on Toastmasters, we have until July the 15th, so that's exactly two weeks from now. And I hope to find them, sorry, three weeks from now, and I hope to find them. And there have been lots of other challenges as well, but you know what I remember the most? It's not just the fact that there was a challenge, it was the fact that in the end, everything comes through. Everything falls into place together, and it's just, it's an amazing journey. It's a journey that I would love to share with absolutely everyone that I know at Toastmasters.
Well, you will be able to do that, I'm sure. So I want to stay with you, because I want to look ahead to the future of Toastmasters and your own paths going ahead. So come on, you've got the magic wand, Norberto. If you had the power to change one thing in Toastmasters overnight, what would it be and why?
That's a great question, that's a really good question as well. I know, no, that's a great question, I love that. I think what I would change the most at Toastmasters was to have even more impact on marketing when it comes worldwide, so that it's an even more recognized brand. Right now, when I talk to people, people already recognize Toastmasters, or at least when I ask them, they nod and say, yeah, yeah, I know Toastmasters. But most people don't, they kind of confuse us with mixed toast, or toast mixer, whatever. You know, actually, if you go on eBay, you look for Toastmasters, there's an actual toast maker there, that's called Toastmasters. So I think, one good way, and in fact, by the way, Rady, this is going to be our question to the incoming international candidates, starting very soon. If you become elected, if you are elected to this role, what will you do in order to make Toastmasters a household brand that everybody knows about? Because we all know about Coca-Cola, and Nike, and Apple computers and so on. Why not Toastmasters? We know how great this product is, right? So everybody should know about it, that's the thing, I would invest millions in making sure that it would be, I don't know, on the Super Bowl commercials, the midterm, mid-time, you know, it would be everywhere, so that the family would grow from 300,000 to 3 million, to 30 million, whatever.
You know you're going to have a problem with the UK, because we have another organization called Toastmasters.
Oh, I know, I've heard about that.
Plus, we make toast.
That's very cool.
Rady, Rady, talking about you. You've got a couple of weeks before you step down, and then you become the immediate past international president. Looking forward to after that role, what are you planning to do? Will you stay involved with Toastmasters, or in another capacity, or have you got your sights on something else?
No, you know, the very first woman who became president of Toastmasters was Helen Blanchard, and she said, if you had to get everything you can get out of Toastmasters, you would never leave Toastmasters. So I think I'm in that camp. I truly enjoyed the experience. I think one of the things that really make people stay is that feeling of community, of family, that we're all one big, large family, looking out for each other and helping each other. That's what makes it really good. And to Norberto's point about finding area directors, I have to tell you, and I admit this, I only became an area director because I found out you need to do that to get to DTM. And I thought, oh, yeah, I need to do this, right? And it opened my eyes that there's a... And it opened my eyes that there's a whole world outside your club. Because before, I never left my club. I just went to my club meetings. And then you realise, oh, you have to, you know, hold an area contest and do other things outside. And then I went to the district conference. So I think persuading them, because they are the face of Toastmasters, if only they realise how much more we have to offer. And if they would just take the position, that would be great.
Thank you very much. Right. This is the last area we're going to be talking about. Noberto, start with you. What's one speech you've delivered that still sticks in your memory and why?
Hmm, that's a good question. I will never forget the time when I made a speech, a two-minute speech in my application to become a division director. That happened in Luxembourg, twenty sixteen. I was the most nervous person you could ever see. If you had taken my pulse, if there was a doctor in the room, they would just ship me off to the hospital immediately because I'm sure that my heart is pounding that much. They would say, Noberto, you have no condition to be going on the stage. It's ridiculous. Don't go. But I did and I won. And I was not particularly the best speech technically, but at least I know that I, I think I inspired people with a message that was about them, not about me. It was about the team that they would be able to have, not about what I did in my past. So again, it was like answering the question that they had in their minds, which was, what's in it for me? What does the organisation win if you become division director? And I think I was good, at least to answer that question. And that was why I think I was elected. Today, for me, that was a landmark because since then, the only time when I became nervous again was actually five weeks ago. On the speech that I gave right in front of you, Rudi, you remember this, this on the demo meeting in Rabat, I have right in front of me, Rudi, and slightly to the right, there's Luisa Montalvo, the winning of the public speaking, world championship of public speaking. And my heart was pounding again. Okay, not so much, but it was. And I thought, oh my God. I was so nervous. But it wasn't the speech. I was a Toastmaster. That was it.
Excellent. It's good that your heart's beating.
A lot.
It goes bum-biddy-bum, which is all good. Very good. Rudi, last question. If you could have lunch with any past international president, who would it be and what would you ask them? So if you could have lunch with any past international president, anyone at all, who would it be and what would you ask them?
Oh, it would be Helen Blanchard, the first woman. She had to even come in as Homer Blanchard and all that she overcame. Those sort of stories I find very inspiring. People who broke the glass ceiling, people who paved the way for others to get there, you know, those are all to me. So even today, I think we have a long ways to go. So for example, I have two daughters. And I realised, looking back on my own journey, when I was a child, by sheer coincidence, the Prime Minister of India was Indira Gandhi. So I just grew up thinking, oh, yeah, women can be prime minister. Like, I never thought twice about it. Only now I realise that is such a rare occurrence. If you think about the US, we struggled so much to get women in the topmost position. So in my own life with my two daughters, I have done this deliberately. I don't know what they'll say later on, but I made sure their paediatricians were women. I made sure, like, all the key people they saw in their lives growing up would be in, you know, responsibility, position. So they would think, yes, I can do this too. So I don't know. I'm doing what I believe is in their best interest. I don't know. But I think there's lots of opportunities and I just want more people to take it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Rudi, for taking the time. And Noberto, before I end, I've got a question for everyone. And if you could write your answers in the chat, that'd be great. If you had to describe Toastmasters in just three words, what would they be? If you had to describe Toastmasters in three words, what would they be? As fast as you can, just write down the first three words that come to your mind. And it doesn't have to be grammatically correct. It can be just three random words as you wish. Being a better you. Very good. Family, fun, practise, practise, practise. Fun, useful, community. School for confidence, effective communication, fun. Family, growth, self-development. Any others? You can put them in, you can write them in Spanish or in Portuguese if you want to as well. Or Catalan, Scarlett, because I know you speak Catalan. Transparent, inspiring and surprising. Excellent. Take those words, use them, follow the example that Rudi and Noberto have given us. Two excellent leaders. Crikey, if you're not inspired to do more after listening to Rudi and to Noberto, then please leave right now. You won't do that because I believe this has been a fabulous session. And thank you again for taking the time to come and join us, Rudi. We do appreciate it. And also, Noberto. And I wish you all the very best as a district director going forward. And of course, Rudi, as you take off the hat and then put on another hat, which is the immediate past international president. And Mr. Toastmaster, I'm handing back to you now.
Thank you very much, Pedro. Well done. Well done. Lot of good questions, lot of answers. And I'm sure that there's more questions you have. And then I took notes here. Still learning. You know, the old saying, you're learning, well, I learned this in management. If you're the smartest person in the room, you're in the wrong room. So we're still learning. Learn by doing. Well, we're about ten minutes before the hour. I don't think we have time for table topics. Angel, I hope that's okay with you. We don't have time for table topics because I want to end the meeting at nine o'clock because I know people around the world have their schedule. Time is important. You can have more money, but you cannot have more time. I'm going to ask all of you to say one word in any language you know to describe today's meeting. One word, one word. And let's start from the bottom of my list here. Paula, one word to describe today's meeting.
Inspiring.
Okay, inspiring. Okay, Donna from California, one word.
Thought-provoking. I know it's true.
All right, Javier, Javier Macias, one word.
Brilliant.
Okay. Scarlett in Barcelona.
Mission.
Angel, Hacha from Ingram Micro, one word.
Um.
Okay. Juan Lazada, one word.
Reconnect.
Recon, oh, I like that. And Angel in Dubai.
Entertaining.
Okay. Angie, Angela, our founder, Sierra Santander, one word.
Bright.
And Noberto from Portugal, one word.
Wonderful.
And our very special guest from New Jersey.
Enjoyable.
Enjoyable. Did I miss anybody? Did I miss anybody out there?
Yes, you did.
Yes, tell us, one word.
Estupendo.
Estupendo. Anybody else?
How about your word, Michael?
We have Sebastian.
My word was, my word is just learning, just learning, still learning, still learning, still learning. It's been a pleasure to be your Toastmaster of the evening.
Mike. Mike, I think we have five minutes for table topics, please. There's still ten minutes left.
Ten minutes?
What did you think?
Maybe for three, maybe only for three people. It's up to you, Madam President, Mr. President. If you want to have table topics, that's okay. But those who have to leave are going to leave. I understand that too. So Angel, if you want to be table topics, go for it.
As you like it. I mean, of course, we will be listening to Rudi and to Noberto the whole time and the whole evening. But actually, in Toastmaster meetings, we want to make sure that everyone attending has the possibility to speak. So this is the purpose of the impromptu speech section. Very quickly, it's going to be very easy. I will propose a theme. You can think about that for twenty seconds and then give us a speech for two or three minutes that actually will be shorter than a normal speech, but with a beginning, a body and an end. Okay, so we're going to talk about the end of the world. Sorry, I don't know what has happened this last two weeks that made me think about that. So first volunteer, please, who is going to be? Anyone?
You know, it's amazing how shy Toastmasters get when you ask them a simple question, the end of the world. Listen, I'll answer it, Angel. The end of the world.
Well, no, 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 come on. Wait a minute. It is going to, well, but you have to listen to the question first.
I just bet your mind.
Okay, Pedro. So this is the last day of in the world. I mean, the last, the end of the world. What would you do during this last day?
On the last day of the world? Well, so it's not the last day of the world. And I'll tell you why it's not the last day of the world. Because I've been watching Star Trek. And in Star Trek, there's this portal that you can go through and you can go back to any time in time. And that's what I'm going to do. So whilst you're saying it's the end of the world, I'm saying it's the end of a chapter and I'm going to start a new chapter. And when I walk into that new chapter, it's got to be a brand new beginning where people learn to listen, where people learn to respect one another, where people learn to pause. And they take the time to explain themselves and not just open their mouths and let things come out which leads to the end of the world. So it's not going to happen. So thank you for trying to trick me into what I would do on the end of the, but it's not going to happen. So thank you very much, Angel.
Thank you very much, Pedro. So new volunteer?
Donna raised her hand before.
Okay, so let's go ahead. So again, this, sorry for, but this is the end of the world, I said. What is the thing that you regret the most that you did not do?
Interesting. For me, I think the thing that I regret was not spending more time with my parents. I lost my parents early on. They were rather young. And it wasn't until I was an adult that I actually really got to know my parents. So I regret that. I wish that I could have more time with them and follow through with that. But on the other side, what I've done is I make sure, I have twin sons that are twenty-six years old. And every day, my son Stephen and I race to say, I love you more. The first person who says that during the day wins the day. And you would not believe how hysterical it has become. As one night, probably about eleven-thirty at night, I turned to him and I said, I love you more. We had not said it all day. I do not let a day go by without sharing how I feel with my friends and my family. I make sure that every conversation that I have is a, if I never spoke to that person again. Love, respect, integrity, you know, all of the, all of the things that we have within Toastmasters. So again, there is that one regret, but I make sure I don't pass it on to my next generation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you for sharing. Beautiful. Another volunteer? Come on, quickly.
Paula? Are you volunteer?
Javier?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to do the.
Speak slowly, please. So I can listen to you.
Sorry, it's my fault. Sorry. I'm going to ask you, what is something that you really regret that you did and you wish that you had not done it?
Well, I regret, so I haven't speak English fluently. I can't speak English fluently. It's my regret. So if I was born, I begin to learn English since I was a baby.
Thank you very much. Do we have time for someone else?
Go, Paula.
One more.
Okay. I'm judging Paula Felix, but I don't know if she will take up the challenge.
Oh, my God. So you want me to speak about the end of the world, right?
No, I'm going to. First, I make a question about the end of the world. Remember that this is the end of the world. I'm going to ask you something.
Sorry?
So you will reincarnate immediately. This is the end of the world. I mean, but you will reincarnate immediately. In who or what you would love to reincarnate?
I didn't understand. Angel, can you repeat, please?
Yes. This is the end of the world. You are going to die, but you will reincarnate in something or someone immediately. So this, what is this or what is for the person in which you would like to reincarnate?
Oh, that's very easy for me. I would like to reincarnate in Manatam Gandhi. It's my, it's a leader for me, a reference, an inspiration. And I think if he was alive right now, maybe the situation in the world could be really better with his silence, with his non-violent way of doing things. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Time for last one? Okay, I pass it on to Toastmaster. Thank you very much, guys. Beautiful answers.
Thank you, Angel. Thank you. Well, there it is, folks. Live from Toastmasters, Sardanero, ten-year anniversary, I will turn the meeting back to our club president, Juan Lazada. Juan, I return it back to you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much for another amazing evening. As I said before, it's time for reconnect for me because it's late months. I've been, as we say in Spanish, living like a chicken without head because I have no time for anything, trying to handle too many things at the same time and run over, like living on a raft or run over by bison stampede. So these kind of things, and especially, I would thank Rudi for all her messages, I would add one thing which is important for me, which is to keep contact and keep attending the meetings. That reinforces the sense of membership. And I would add it because I feel refuel, even if I'm running without head, I feel refuel every time I attend the meeting. So thank you, everyone, sincerely for your support, for your time with us and hope to see you soon, soon, soon. Thank you very much.
Bye.
Okay, you can open your mic and say goodbye. And thank you, Valeria. Thank you for your timer, okay? Because it's on the chat. No one wants the time, but it's on the chat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Bye bye. Good to be here.
Bye, guys. Thank you very much.